I'll just do that before we. Okay. And when you want to do that before we. All the. Okay. Yeah, you you want to go on? Any of you. Yeah, you go right in.
I, Donald Kirchman, do solemnly swear to affirm the support of the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of Minnesota and all the laws, ordinances, and resolutions of the City of Kenyon, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the Office of Mayor of the City of Kenyon, Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability to still help me God.
Right.
Yeah.
Hey. I, Mary Bailey, solemnly swear or affirm to support the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of Minnesota, and all the laws, ordinances, and resolutions of the City. That I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the Office of Mayor of the City of Kenyon, Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability to still help me God.
Thanks.
I, Alana Bruner, do solemnly swear or affirm to support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, and all the laws, ordinances, and resolutions of the City of Kenyon, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of this Office of City Councilmember of the City of Kenyon, Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
All right, I guess I called order and roll call to the meeting. Alana Bruner.
Present.
Lee Scholander.
Present.
Phil Halgerson.
Here.
Mary Bailey.
Here.
Myself, Don Kirchman, here. Is there any citizen comments?
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Forget that.
Do a pledge of allegiance, please take off your caps for a minute.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the Republic where our borders stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start off with the citizen comments. Are there any citizen comments that would like to be made? All right, here we know citizen comments. Um. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
The motion approved. All right. Because sent agenda items. Um, I. Believe we have two items we'd like to add to the agenda items. One is from. On section eight of legal F. The Kenney engraved in 2025 race for legal services. To add that to the consent agenda. And the other one is from. Section eleven, a new business F. Jacob's law requests for increased fees for 2025 criminal prosecution contract. Adding that to the consent agenda item as well. Do we have a motion to do that?
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will second it.
All right, all favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. All right. Um, approval of minutes and appointments. Um, do we have a motion for approval of minutes and appointments?
I'll make a motion for the approval of minutes and appointments.
I will second it.
All favor.
Aye.
Motion approved. Right, presentations, public hearings, recognition, or poll conclusions. Um, do we have a motion to? Prove that? That we're.
There is, I think.
There's nothing.
Nothing there.
Okay. All right. Engineering, Derek, do you have anything on engineering?
Uh, I've got, uh, the report, report in the packet there. Uh, if you have any questions on it, we're approximately fifty percent done with the twenty twenty five project plans. Uh, we do plan to hold a neighborhood meeting, uh, at the end of January here, so that notice will be going out fairly soon. Um, otherwise, just a quick update, unless you have.
Right. No, no questions. I'm sorry.
Um, we can't, um, actually, a perfect opportunity to learn more about that project would be to come to that neighborhood meeting. Um, I, I could talk for forty five minutes. Um, but, uh, yeah, for any of you that haven't heard about that one, that would be a really good. Street and utility improvement project that.
What is that meeting?
What's that?
What is that meeting?
Uh, that were tentatively scheduled, I believe, for the twenty seventh. Monday, uh, between five thirty and seven.
Will that be here?
Yes. And if you're unable to make that.
All right.
Open house style meeting at.
Is there any further questions than that? No, you gotta ask for more.
No approval necessarily. Informational.
Okay. All right, legals, Scott Riggs.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll jump in. You have five different ordinance just for you tonight, um, all of which is run through the planning commission. Holly has put together very good, uh, an office report on all of these. Certainly, well. Be like an engineer and give you a lot more information. If you got questions, let me know, but I'll start running to the first one. You have ordinance number one oh eight. Uh, it amends a section of the zoning code relative to accessory buildings and structures. Holly's laid out the divisions that we there and discussed at the planning commission level. Certainly deal with those in detail, but it is a pretty straightforward ordinance on page twenty four of the packet. Um, deals with height, uh, issues, also, uh, in trouble down floor area accessory buildings. That, uh, structures that could be, uh, well, consistent with being with the principal main building. delta simultaneously, talks about a catch structured over a certain requirement, uh, excuse me, over a two hundred square feet. Uh, amount requiring building permit, which is managed basically by building board as well. And that no accessory building can be moved from here in this case, what doesn't allow somebody to put up a small. Structure in backyard or anyone on property and then.
So accessory just means like garage, shed.
Yeah.
Whatever, okay, right.
So define them in our.
Okay, got it.
I have a question under item G. When it says. I want to make sure I'm reading this right. The total floor area of all accessory buildings must not exceed a thousand square feet. Is that all of them combined?
Correct. Yeah.
Yeah, what if you want, what if you want to have a big garage?
So I got a big garage.
They'll shed in the past, the planning commission dealt with that, and I'm, my understanding, and I wasn't having. So, but. People just do have a practice in the.
Okay. Is it usually a thousand feet?
Uh. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, it's pretty standard then.
Okay.
Can you do other things? I think missing water.
Okay.
Okay.
I. I would argue a lot of these provisions are. Not so much mess, but based on the fact. Most recommended. Planning Commission have a public hearing on it. I don't believe of any comments at all.
All right.
Um, so we gotta make a motion?
Motion go through and then a little poll vote.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number one oh eight, amending section five twenty point one three.
Well. All right, we have a motion, a second for ordinance number one oh eight, many section five two zero point one three. With the Kenney City Code regarding the section building instruction. Structures. Um, all favor? The motion.
Well, in this one, we have to go along because it's, so then you have to ask her yet, and I'm just, I'm just like, you gotta ask her individually. Yeah.
That's okay. Alana?
Yes.
Lee?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Aye.
I myself, aye. Motion passes. I would move on to.
Yep, yep, then ordinance will be published like they have to do with all ordinances upon publication. Uh, next item you have is ordinance number one oh nine, dealing with residential performance standards in R one and R two districts. Um, again, a deduction that occurred at the planning commission level to establish some type of standards relative to, uh, R one and R two districts for residential properties. Some codes have this, many codes do not have this. This has been a discussion point over the years for Kenyon. And, uh, this is perfectly acceptable to have some type of standards for facilities in our market residential district. Planning Commission have a public hearing, no public comment. Go through the divisions that are there, but they are again. Forward and establishing standards for how properties to be constructed most, uh, presentable and to be, et cetera, so. Establishes to the basic level of standards. But that again is recommended.
I will make the motion to approve ordinance number one oh nine, amending section, the city code, and resolution twenty twenty five oh three, approving publication.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Alana?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Great.
Aye.
Itself, aye. Motion passes for ordinance number one ten and many section five fifteen point fifteen subdivision. Two of the Kenney City Code regarding permitted uses in the C one downtown commercial district in the City of Kenyon, approved.
One oh nine.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ordinance one oh nine.
Ordinance one oh nine. Any section five twenty point three seven. Approved.
Can you do resolution as well for the?
Yes, twenty, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Do you need them as separate?
Let's do that one separate.
Okay.
The ordinance itself, and yeah, just to say, because just we don't need a roll call.
Okay. Okay, I will approve resolution twenty twenty five oh three, second.
All right, Alana?
You can stay out.
This one, you're okay, just to go every time those.
So I know, it's sorry. Aye.
All right. Motion passes for a resolution twenty twenty five oh three, approving publication of ordinance number one oh nine by title and summary.
Yep, once that's public. Next item is ordinance one ten, uh, regarding additional language to be added into the, um. C four section five fifteen, uh, usage of, um. I may try and. This is dealing with, uh. Yeah, is it the path one? What it does is it creates the usage of the path two parlor with the definition, another ordinance you'll feel adopted following this. Um, and body art, et cetera. And you need to have a place where it's allowed. It's not permissible in the city right now. Direction from council figure to the form of the ordinance is what it allows. Path two space establishment to current community. Uh, this amendment here allows it in the C one downtown.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance one ten, amending that section.
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Alana? Lee?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes.
And then we gotta approve that resolution separately.
Correct.
I will approve resolution twenty twenty five oh five, proving the publication. Oh, oh, did I say oh four? Or I said oh five?
Yeah.
Oh, it says oh five online. Oh, four, okay, resolution twenty twenty five oh four.
I'll second it.
All right, all favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes for resolution twenty twenty five oh four, approving publication. Ordinance number one ten by title and summary.
Uh, then in conjunction with that, you also need a, an ordinance, and this is ordinance one eleven, that's on the agenda, that is really the police power section relative to allowing a tattoo parlor or establishment body art establishment. And et cetera. Well, this does face with all state statutes that licensing occurs at the state level. Nobody can operate in a community unless they can produce a license from the state level. This also defines the body art, tattooing, et cetera, more in more detail than the zoning code does. Zoning code references back to this section, um, to utilize that definition, obviously. And this gives the city the control to allow or not to allow this type of establishment. The last ordinance was the location. This is the authority for the tattoo parlor. Well, it's not really a zoning ordinance, but it is still with the event of planning commission who can ties in with the last ordinance to adopt it. The one item it has in here is to, uh, operations in eleven thirty five point oh nine, the second page of the ordinance on page thirty. My packet. It talks about the time for operation. It does set that as from eight AM to ten PM, so it does not allow it later or earlier.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number one eleven.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion in a second for. Ordinance one eleven. Alana?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Itself is aye, motion passes for ordinance number eleven, ending section one one, one three five tattoos by piercing brandies current Kenyon establishment.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty five oh five for the publication. Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All favor?
Aye.
Motion passes for resolution twenty twenty five oh five, approving publication of ordinance number one eleven by title and summary.
Gather well now. Patient, you have the. Regulatory scheme for your police power authority, and I know there's been people talking. Next item you have, uh, is something that's been before the council on the planning commission call, discussing regarding cannabis regulation within the community. You ordered to that before you deal with both the regulatory portion of it, just like you talked about in the tattoo parlor, but also the location part. For any of the different components of cannabis. Uh, legislation that the, uh, state legislature adopted recently. I will say immediately, this is a starting point for your ordinance. It's a decent ordinance. People definitely change every time the legislative sets in the next four or five years, that becomes the reality of how this is operating, what's happening, and, uh, how the regulatory scheme at the state level is coming into view. As of yesterday, rules were published by the Office of Cannabis Management. They are out there for thirty days. They are in a common period. It will change, which means you may be even changing ordinance following this in a month or two, but we do want you to get something on books, so you are. Planning Commission, the news particularly as to the locations of items. Basically, starting on page forty eight, goes to page forty nine, um, in those sections where you can have retailers, uh, delivery business, edible temp retailers, but also cultivation, which the only thing in cultivation wise that is allowed based on those ordinance in the city, which is consistent with most cities, is indoor cultivation outside. So. Similar to a greenhouse type. In this, uh, section. That's allowed as a vehicle use. You have other items that are allowed further on as to wholesaling, et cetera. It would be industrial park area. Detail sales would be in the. This ordinance also established a setback. For primary areas, that's at the bottom of page forty six. In section eleven forty, that's eleven, which is one thousand feet from a school, five hundred feet from a daycare, five hundred feet from a residential feeding facility, and five hundred feet from park features. Really what that means as the park features, it's features that would be utilized by. If you have a very large park, it could be within five hundred feet in certain areas of that park, but not where in playground, or school, or some facility like that. Question came up at the planning commission, which is a very reasonable question. Children congregating, et cetera, not covered in statute, still an open question, certainly something to think about, and staff has already brought that up, so we'll look at it. But right now, you're establishing the areas that are covered in statute. One thing you'll see that's not there is. Uh, planning commission, as I said, reviewed it, was comfortable with all the step back, comfortable with the zoning district. Your regulatory scheme you have there, uh, again, is, is fairly straightforward for the operations you're talking about. It will change. I'm promising you that at some point, somebody's provision will likely have to change. As the ordinance is drafted, it states that the city is the one doing registration of facilities. And I had some conversations with staff regarding that. We also have later on in the agenda, I think. Taken, where you're asking for anything in the agreement for the county to do that registration, which is fine, and that's certainly what you can start with. That means that Holly and I have to change just a little section in here and go back to the ordinance that was actually before the planning commission. Uh, but it was a little unclear when I thought we were doing that. So softly sent this down, uh, did add that back in, but we can certainly change that, but I want to make sure you understand the ordinance. As proposed, as the city registering it, I think what I've heard from staff is that. Council previously wanted the county to do that, and that's why we have that agreement. I just want to clarify that what you want. If that's where you're at, that's fine. What that means is the city does not control registration of any, of any entity. It also means that more than one entity is going to be in the community, and that control. That's up to you folks, but, um, uh, that's certainly a sound way to approach it. I'm not sure how much that will entail, how much enforcement that will require. The city will still have to do certain enforcement aspects, but the county would be obligated to do with, uh, spot checks and things like.
I think we had a lot of discussion about that, and it was just, we weren't really sure, right? We kind of had a lot of back and forth.
Yeah.
So are you guys capable of that ethic just for now? And we could, they said, I think they said, he said, we could always change it later. But like, right now, it's just the county and maybe just because we don't know what's going on. Because.
And wouldn't it be?
Just leave it to them to start.
And with the county, isn't it based on population too? Like, yeah, they're not gonna let multiple entities based on their population.
Well, it, it's county wide at that point in time, so you could get more than one entity in Kenyon, like the good definition.
Right.
But that's, that's the one possibility. Yeah, that's the one difference. So that's the reason I wanted to raise it again, and Joe made very clear. Well, he better ask about that one again, because. I was, after I saw the agenda pack, then I knew we had the later item on.
And if we ever got to the point where we wanted to do it our own municipal, one, the county could still bring in another. It's on top of, ours doesn't count.
It does not, yeah.
For now, for now, I will.
And that, that show I make clear, if the ordinance, even though we have the number, your ordinance number one twelve, it will be where you are deferring to the county to do registration. So we will correct that before it's signed with an air and put out.
Okay. Okay, I will make a motion to approve ordinance number one twelve, amending the Kenyon City Code pertaining to cannabis and hemp business.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Um, Alana?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Self is aye. Motion passes for ordinance number one twelve, amending, amending the Kenney City Code pertaining to cannabis and hemp business.
And I'll, I'll make a motion for a resolution twenty twenty five approving the publication. Twenty twenty five oh six, sorry, approving the publication.
I will second that.
All favor?
Aye.
Yeah. Motion passes, resolution two twenty five oh six, approving publication ordinance number one twelve by title and summary. This approved.
Thank you for very listening on all. That was an engineer. No, you do, a lot of covers there, a lot of work, planning commission, your staff. Good update. Thank you.
Moving on, financials are included in the consent agenda. Moving on to. Old business. Yeah, we put.
Yeah, we would. All right.
All right, moving on to old business. Um, Goodview County delegation agreement, cannabis resale registration. Sorry, what do we do there?
Just a motion to approve that agreement. That's what I was referencing, the agreement that's for the department or the delegation of the registration to the county or counties.
Okay.
Representing a U S D C.
All right, do we have a motion to? Approve the Goodview County delegation agreement for cannabis retail registration?
I'll make a motion. Um, for the agreement with the county delegation.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, what's it? Motion passes for Goodview County delegation agreement for cannabis retail registration. Right, moving on to new business. Um. For the two thousand twenty five appointments and designation. For the E D A committee, we, for your term, we have John Mortison, Stuart Campbell, myself, Don Kirchman. For the library board for a three year term, we have Kayla Larkin. For the planning commission, two year term, we have Jim Malloy, Alana Bruner. For the Public Utility Commission, Doug Hinky. For the Historic Preservation Commission, is, we currently have one vacant position. For the Parker Recreation Committee, we have Joe Warner, and still one vacant position. Um, for appointments. And acting mayor, Mary Bailey. Legal newspapers, Kenyon leader, depository, security state bank, four M, North of Securities. City attorneys, Scott Riggs, Kenney, Kenney and Graven, Trutterd. Prosecuting attorney, David Jacobson, Jacobson Law Firm. City engineer, Derek Olander. Did I pronounce your last name correct?
Olander.
Olander. I'm bolting a mic.
Yeah.
City auditor, um. Abdul. City auditor, Abdul Ike Myers. Financial consultant, George Erlinson, Northern Securities Investments, as allowed per Minnesota statutes, Jeffrey Quirk, Holly Goodnick. We inspector, myself, Donald Kirchman. Audit committee, Scott Leonard. We still have two positions, and there was debate on whether or not we actually need this audit committee. When talking with Scott earlier, he says that he has to report to us anyhow as city administrator, so is this something that we really need? Do we have any discussion on that? Do I have?
Want me to speak to that?
Yes, please.
So, the reason I brought it up to the mayor is Whitney is also part of that from the financial piece, but I can't have her as a person on the committee. So, she will also be part of it. Abdul will be part of the auditing process, going through the budgets. I'm obviously going to be part of that. Anything that we do would be brought back to the council for final approval. So, the option was given, do we want to continue with an audit committee and maybe have a couple of people from the council or others part of that? Or are you comfortable as a council to be able to have us work on it and then bring it for final approval? It's really, I could go either way. I just gave the mayor an option when we were discussing. Because the two people that were on fire, my understanding, at least one of my officers is no longer on the council, so that's what created the vacancies here. So, I'm, I just want to explain that, and I can answer any questions anyway.
I think it was Doug and Molly were both their fire.
Yeah. Most of it, I mean, I don't, it doesn't really matter. It's got to be run by everybody here anyway.
It simplifies the process a little bit. I'm all for that.
Only reason they would go to the audit committee and as a place to go to if they have questions and then go to the council. And then if they needed to reach out for anybody for the questions regarding standard questions that they asked, that there's broad questions or any other stuff as well, they would reach out to those on there. However, it could just designate a point person, I designated Lee this year, staffless questions have been on whoever.
Yeah.
If anybody has desire to be on it and be part of it, absolutely. If you have no desire, and you want your city administrator to work the staff and contractors to get it done and bring it to file through with you, we can go. Whatever you guys, huh? If you like numbers, it would be.
Yeah, I, you don't want me doing the numbers. I'm not the one.
I'm fine with it being with just Scott and, yeah.
Simplify it. I guess we eliminate that and just can simplify the process, because so closely we're going to be together all day anyways, so we've never had an issue. We're pretty approachable, so I'm fine with us.
Do we need a motion to eliminate that, or?
Oh.
All right, then we'll eliminate the audit committee. All right, personnel committee, myself, Don Kirchman, Kim Helgason, and Scott Leonard. Kenyon Fire Relief Association, Don Kirchman and Scott Leonard. KMU discussion, Scott.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, do we have a motion to approve all the above?
Question on number four. You know, what do you do? Kenyon minutes for you to do with that.
I asked myself that myself, and I have no issues with it, so. Instead of calling Public Utility Commission, we call it the KMU. Since I was all referred to.
Just confusing. For me being you.
Yeah. It's for myself also.
Yeah, it's the same, but it adds, the name gives the Kenyans. Oh, yeah, that's my original. Yeah, it doesn't matter. It's fine, we can amend that.
All right.
You know, you're voting for appointment, appointment. Yeah, you need, Mary, you need a motion out of the committee with all of those provisions in this point.
Okay, I'll make a motion for item A one through seven to approve all the appointments.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes for item A one through seven. All right, item B, KMU discussion with Scott Riggs, Scott Leonard, and Frank, if you guys want to speak on that.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I can start with that. So, I would just kick it out here, and as the mayor just stated, it's going to be kind of by committee here, because each one of us had a different piece, with me coming in at a certain process or a certain level with this, so everybody's going to kind of have a piece of it. But basically, just to kick it off, I came in here and I just took a look at the lay of the land, and I wanted to understand kind of how the reporting structure was. I've looked at the ordinance, or excuse me, looked at the org chart and just tried to understand. There were comments that were made to me early on that we don't report to the city administrator, we report to the commission, and we'll get into some of the details a little bit more when we get to there. But then I started getting a little concerned, saying, okay, I was brought in here to manage the activities of the city, but there's one piece of the responsibilities here in the city that seem to think they don't respond or report to a city administrator, and that they kind of run their own way, and so I started asking more questions about it. And the more I dug in, and I can't even tell you how many hours I have into this, looking through the statutes and looking through our policies and looking through our ordinances, and there's even pieces in the code book that talk about it and all that kind of stuff, so I'm finding it all over. And then part of why I'm going to have Frank and Mr. Riggs talk about it a little bit is because the conversation started before I got here a little bit about some of it. And then in further conversations with Mr. Riggs, we were able to find documentation that go back to nineteen ninety-seven, and then, and agreements that were brought forward in two thousand and two thousand and one, but myself and staff can't find where those are and how they were signed. Some recollection is, is they believe that they were signed at some point, but where they're housed right now, we don't know. So, it just kind of snowballed into what does the, what does the council want? Do they want the city administrator to be able to manage all facets of what goes on in the city? If you've had an opportunity to look at the org chart, it's really complicated from what I can see so far. So, ultimately, and I'll get to the bottom, so in the packet you have, and at the end, you'll see what my request has been going forward, but before that, I would like to fill in some of the gaps of some of the other individuals. In conjunction to what the mayor said, I do have a piece that I'm probably going to call on Whitney to be able to talk to a little bit more too, since part of the information she provided me is also in the packet that you actually have. So, with that, that was the kickoff. We'll get into the other pieces of it, and then I will bring it back at the end and kind of wrap it up on what my thoughts were. But all the information I'm talking to you about in the supporting documentation is in your packet that you're able to take a look at now. So, with that, I would like to pass it off to Mr. Boils to kind of take it from that point and what he's done and some of the research, and then we'll go into Mr. Riggs from there and then probably.
I'd like to start by decompressing the room just a little bit. Glad to see you out here, guys, in force. Obviously, you have a definite concern, but the first thing I heard in a loud voice as I sat here was that we're going to do away with KMU. How many of you believe that that's what this is about? Doing away with KMU? Well, apparently, you're the one who said it. This is not, the purpose is not in any way, shape, or form to do away with it, okay? So, I hope that that clarifies to some extent. We're not trying to undercut, et cetera, but we are trying to clarify and recreate this organization in a fashion that it should be, with KMU being part of it. And let me tell you how this evolved, at least from my perspective, and I'll be the first one to tell you, I only see small portions of things, just like the rest of you. I know that there was a performance evaluation done for Randy. Good, glad to hear it. Good job. That performance evaluation, however, was done by the three-person KMU body. That performance evaluation was done without the knowledge of city administrator, Leonard. We do not have a copy of that document. We'll give you a chance to talk, okay? Well, unless you've got that performance evaluation and you'd like to bring it up here right now, that'd be wonderful. Good, good, that's, thank you very much. So, we don't seem to have that performance valuation, nor was the city administrator allowed to see it. Now, in organizations, statutory cities like this, the city administrator and the city council rule the roost, as it were. It doesn't matter if there's a library here or a KMU there, that is their function, and that should be very crisp for all employees. Why? Because if you're ruled by one set of criteria and you by a different one, what happens? There's confusion, there's anger, there's people doing things that are not consistent with one another. As an organization, we can't reach our goals because we all have different goals, and we're running around to try and achieve them, and it may be a waste of money in some respects when we do it. In any case, in any case, the evaluation is done, we asked for a copy of that, we can't find it. Well, apparently, it wasn't done, or it was done not on paper, so that means it's not done. We also find that we can't find a fair amount of KMU documents. It appears that that's in a separate holding spot. I don't know where it is or when it is, but this is supposed to be an open operation. Data practices law requires that certain of our information is available, and in fact, our own policy provides that the city administrator is a responsible authority to keep those documents. It is inappropriate for separate groups to keep various public documents without the knowledge of the responsible authority. And like I said, we don't know where it is, maybe it just doesn't exist, and that's our problem. But let's go back to where I started. We should have one standard that we're living by in terms of what our performance, performance should be, how often we should be evaluated, using what forms, who gets the approval, who gets to approve whether or not I get or you get a wage increase or not, or is that going to be segmented out? You segment it out, you've got all kinds of problems, inconsistency throughout, jealousy. Gee whiz, we've got plenty of that in this world. And so, what is needed is a process to do that, and our Kenyon City Code, section three oh five oh, by the way, starting at state statute, Minnesota statutes, four twelve, and I know I'm not an attorney, I'll shut up, talks about the authorities of a city administrator, et cetera, and the city council, and covers some of those responsibilities of personnel. Our own city code at three oh five oh one and three oh five oh three do as well. Thirdly, we have a personnel policy, forty-two pages long, unfortunately, I know that, where virtually every employee group is in there, police, KMU, general city employees. About the only people exempted are the city council members because they're kind of a different kind of employee. So, we have a problem with the evaluations being done, the location of the evaluations, any kind of standard operating procedure of getting the city administrator's eyes on them, and it's not changed. Something needs to change. This has to be resolved such that I read your, I read that you're not interested in that, Randy.
That's not true. I'm disagreeing.
Oh, okay. I see. That's, there's, no, I'm not debating you.
Have you ever done any work with?
Have I particular, myself? No, no.
Why is the word in, didn't you say all cities?
If I said all cities, I was wrong.
Or I might have goofed up on it.
Yeah, I, there are some cities, but when we see cities, at least the small group we've looked at, there is a single city council responsible to the public, this is pretty typical organization chart stuff, a city administrator responsible to them, the city council, and then the rest of the employees, whether it's a utilities kind of function or public works or police, it doesn't matter. That's the typical one. We've had historically this one that's kind of got strange. It's difficult to really determine who's responsible for what, and that's one of the problems, because you guys don't. And that's your opinion?
It's written in documents I've got.
I've seen the organization chart, it's the most confusing thing I've ever seen.
It's what we're speaking about.
The city can change those things, Randy. Thank you. Right. There are additional reasons for concern, data privacy laws. We have to conform to that, guys. We've got to figure out a way to make sure that all the documents that are generated are available for the public under the responsibility of the responsible authority, and they don't make any exceptions for the city of Kenyon, et cetera. Pardon me?
I'm not saying they're innocent, but they're, they used to be moved, whatever, they got moved to this city hall.
Okay. And now, and now there's one key for both of them? Is there one key for both of the locations here? How many locations are there here for documents? For KMU documents, for, yeah.
I don't think they are even.
Gotcha. Okay, that's something I'm learning.
Obviously, that's mine. I don't know where they got put.
Right. There used to be, we think, still historical agreements between the city and KMU. There are five of them we've been able to put our hands on thus far. That may be more, I don't know. I wouldn't know whether there are, as I've just demonstrated. One talked about personal utilization agreement, authorizing utilization of both administrative assistant and finance director, and accomplishing joint and individual responsibilities of the two bodies. Another was municipal project agreement. This agreement said that the two entities will cooperate in city construction projects. Obviously, I'm simplifying these greatly. Another was a billing agreement, pardon me. This agreement sets forth a type of assistance that representatives of both entities will render to one another for billing purposes in their respective services. Number four is administrative staff supervision agreement. This agreement delegates all authority for supervision and management of all KMU employees to the city staff, and specifically to the city administrator. Building property control agreement, city grants authority to KMU to have jurisdiction and control over city water system, light, and power, but the city does not grant KMU jurisdiction and control over municipal buildings. In other words, the buildings and the facilities stay under the ownership of the city of Kenyon. Based upon those agreements, it seems to me, there was a time that there was a more collaborative way of working these things out. I don't know what happened to that. I don't know what happened to that. I think we'd all like to get back to that, but a couple of preconditions. One is the city administrator, and two, the city council needs to be involved in the overall supervision, management, financial, that sort of thing, of KMU as it is with the rest of the community. Those are things that need to happen. And I've noted that because of some of, and this again is my opinion, because we've had different expectations, KMU, one set of expectations, maybe Public Works another, I think that's resulted in some friction, some withdrawal, some lack of collaboration and coordination, as we've had for many, many years before that. We want to get back to that, I think we all do. We recently got together in one-by-one interviews and talked a little bit about some of the friction, and what's its source, and how can we change it? And that's still the hope. Mayor members of the council, concluding my long discussion here, we're asking that the city council direct the city administrator to bring all aspects of KMU and city operations, organization chart, job descriptions, operating procedures, records, all types of record-keeping, including financial practices and cooperation into conformance with city requirements, and that all employees and commissioners cooperate completely with this. This request includes bringing all operational, pardon me, and management, financial, administrative authority under the city council and administrator, city administrator. It is recommend the council charge your personnel committee with this responsibility. That will keep the council's hands on it, and that, of course, is the mayor and council member Helgason, and city administrator Werner. I would ask that, once the discussion is concluded, that by motion, second and vote, you would approve that sort of direction to the city staff. That concludes my comments, I am available for any questions you might have. Not yet.
We get confused, we...
We did fill them out, now where they're at, I can't test it out, but we did fill them out, you know, you made a comment, you thought Whitney didn't do it, but no, it was done.
If you close the meeting, I had reason to believe that's exactly what you were doing, is a bona fide personnel evaluation. That's... That was my mental leap, I wasn't trying to make any accusation.
We've always cooperated, we as KMU as a separate entity. Now, if that isn't so, that's something for Scott Rigs to add up with, because point next, if we're not, we got to get in line, and hey, we'll get in line as quick as anything else, give us a direction to go.
Okay.
Right now, we don't know.
You don't know? Gotcha. Do you want to let these guys speak now, or are you done with your comments? Yeah, why don't we do the rest of the staff report? There... It's a three-part series here, I apologize for that, but let us finish that, then you'll hear the whole of it, and... Thank you.
I'll jump in there. Yeah, well, Scott and Frank spoke to me about this, sort of the historical interaction of the city and KMU. Well, a lot of discussion points the council had back, you know, starting in 1997 to 2001, that's the five agreements that Scott has in his staff report here. The idea was to bring the two entities, and again, KMU only exists because the city's here. It was established in 1934 by ordinance, under chapter 412, as Frank said. There are other ways to establish utility, that's not what's happened here. This is a statutory utility under the arm of... It's an arm of the city, under Minnesota statutes, chapter 412. The idea was to bring the entities more closer together, because a lot of staff was being utilized across the board, and it still is, that's the whole point. That's what all these agreements were trying to do, is make these synergies work and have KMU just like another department of the city, which in essence, it really is. There is some authority, and Randy's mentioned it, for contracting in certain circumstances, power sales contracts, things like that, that the KMU board controls. Council does have some say in certain things, particularly when bonding occurs for purchases and things like that, and you've always worked well with that. KMU's worked well with the city in those regards. We... I don't think we've done any recently like that for a while, Randy, but every time that occurred, it would have to come to the council, and council would have to do certain things, because again, it's an arm of the city. So the idea of these agreements, and what the council and KMU did at that point in time, was to try to make everything work smoothly. It seems like we're back to the point where you need to make everything move... Work smoothly. So, I put these agreements together at the behest of both entities. And my understanding, and I was at the meetings where they were adopted, they were all adopted, signed, but nobody can find them here. And I'll be honest, all our files got sent offsite, and frankly, my secretary can't find the old hard copies, everything's been digitized, and these don't exist. I have the original ones here, but not everything signed. But the reality is, they were in place, and you've been observing them for many years, and that's how the operations have been. It seems like what's been described to me, we've gotten a little bit away from that, and I think that's what Scott and Frank are looking at, how do we bring that together? How do you work with Randy and that board, and make everything work smoothly? The reality is, is it should work smoothly, because you are under one personnel policy, you are under the same records retention schedule, you are under the same data practices policy. So all these things apply to everybody, every entity in the city, and we do need one central repository, which was not the case before for all documents for those purposes. And that's what we have to get back to, that was my understanding what happened, and for some reason, we may not be there. Randy is correct, there used to be different, you know, city hall was down the road before this was built, everything was brought together, that's why these, all these agreements occurred, and culminated in this new facility back in 2001, I believe, and then all these agreements were in place, so you could have staff working together and overlapping all duties. The reality is, yes, the agreement says that everybody here in city hall is under the city administrator, that's the direction of what's there. I can describe these agreements in more detail, I don't think that's necessary, but the whole point of what the council and KMU did, what, twenty-three years ago plus, was to work through all the things that Scott has raised and Frank has also raised, and try to get it so it's working as smoothly as possible. You don't have... Well, for one thing, you're under the same audit as well, I think that's a financing that Whitney was going to talk about. All of this is together, and it needs to be together and in one place, and you got to figure out how to make that all work. Yeah, yeah, and I don't think it's... Somehow, it's gotten away from that, maybe it... Different administrators or what, did different things, I don't know, but you're... My recommendation would be get back to what these five agreements were, they may need to be updated a little bit, but that's the point between this board and KMU, which you five, you make that appointment to those three commissions, they're not elected, you are the five elected members in this city. So yes, you do have a lot of control here. But yeah, the recommendation is get back to what those agreements are, if we need something else, fine, but it is to get a central repository, that way you've got all documents together, you can apply your data practices policy, your records retention, all accounting mechanisms should be together, so your audit is smooth and seamless, and you can report all your accounts properly, things like that, that's what needs to happen. So, that's kind of the historical, my two cents on that, and I can answer any other questions statutorily, et cetera, what the authorities are between the two entities.
And these are the agreements that you...
That Frank mentioned, yeah. Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Pretty much exactly.
And they are not complicated agreements, they were pretty simple, straightforward, that here's what we're trying to do, and here's what the boards were trying to accomplish, and here's how we want to utilize staff, and records, and buildings, and all those types of things. It was to make sure there was a clear baseline for how your operation should be, to make everything streamlined.
Okay, with that, I'll just add, and then I'll turn it over to Whitney here in a second, I'll just add a couple of things and answer a couple of questions that I heard about. So when I was brought in here, and we were going through the interviewing and all that kind of stuff, shame on me if I didn't understand it correctly, but I was told that I would be coming in here to be able to run the day-to-day operations of what goes on in the city, okay? Day-to-day operations of the city to include KMU, is the way I looked at it, right? I've met with every department head in the city, and kind of quasi with Randy in a couple of different meetings we sat in, but we haven't, Randy and I haven't sat down one-on-one. Every other unit in the city, to go from the muni to the fire department, to the police department, to everything else that we have responsibility, I've met with all of them, we've sat down, and everybody understands that this is the org chart we go. When I have had conversations and overheard conversations in the office from some KMU staff, they're under the impression that we don't report to the city administrator, we do our own thing, you can't do this, you can't do this, we don't take any direction, so on and so forth. Not exactly how it was proposed to me, and really not really what I signed up, but what you're asking me to do, the way this stood up, the way it's set up right now, is basically to be your city administrator with one hand behind my back, okay? If I got to sit down with Public Works, and I need to sit down with KMU, and we got to work out something and come to a resolution, if the attitude is, I don't listen to you, I don't report to you, you don't tell me what to do, I don't know how we get anywhere. And it was demonstrated to me, when I sat in and in the meeting, that I was asked to leave the meeting because they were going to close the meeting and they were going to do a performance evaluation. That's where it started for me, I'm like, whoa, wait, what's going on here? Why would the city administrator not be part of that? If you look at the performance evaluations, it has a signature block on, and Frank did a good jo... At the bottom of it, that it goes to the city administrator. Frank did a good job of explaining it, so I'm not going to beat that part up. I heard Randy say something about an org chart. The org chart that I've been able to find in this city is dated back to 2001. Back to when these contracts, or whatever you want to call them, agreements, let's call them, not contracts, when those agreements were being discussed at that same time. I can assure you, looking at that org chart that we have on file here, is not a very operational org chart, okay? Back to another point that was made, have you looked at other, or when Frank was challenged, have you worked with other utilities and all that kind of stuff? So I have reached out to other-like cities, that what we do, that have electric utilities that report up. The city administrator in the org chart does have electric utilities underneath it. So there are examples out there, we're not creating this out of thin air, we're not just making it up, we're not trying to make life just more miserable for Randy or whatever it is, right, and KMU. We are trying to, from my perspective, pull this together, so we can operate efficiently and effectively, all the way from day-to-day operations to budgeting, to who's giving Holly direction, who's taking direction from the city administrator, or thinks they don't have, and all the other data practices and all the other stuff that we talked about. When I hear an individual say in the office that I keep all these documents, I'm the only one that has a key, and you'll get my key from me to get the documents when I leave... It's what you said, I heard you say it, Randy?
I never said that. I've never said that.
Okay. I was standing right there when it was said, so now you're calling me, then you're calling me a liar then?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Saying that about me, that's a lie.
So what was the... Okay, I'm not going to get into it. We can take it off, fine, if you want, Randy, but I know what I heard, because I documented when I went back to my office. I don't know why I would make that up.
I never said that.
Okay, let me ask you this, who has the key to the file cabinet inside the IT room?
The one that says KMU on it?
Yeah.
I do.
Okay, who else has a key?
Nobody.
Okay, so then why would... You just called me a liar on, doesn't that just make sense in what you just answered?
You said that I was asked, and I said that you... Whatever you just said on that, that isn't true.
It is, because Whitney asked you, why can't I get a key to that? And you said, Riggs told me that the only... That you guys can get the key when I retire, and that's coming from...
No, I'm not retired. The only way you can get it is...
Will we please stay focused on the subject and not discuss it?
Well, I take a little offense, some will call me a liar when I heard it with my own ears in there.
It is a lie, I take offense too when you say it, it's a lie.
Okay, well then let me apologize to you, Randy, and if that's not what I heard, but I heard it, others heard it, and I went back to my office and documented it, but if I got it wrong, let me be the...
Please stay focused on the subject.
But I'm saying I did say that.
Okay, so let me apologize then. So with that, Frank kind of went through the request of what we're asking for, and I believe it's what needs to happen for us to be able to move forward as a city and then continue to operate effectively and efficiently, because as you're going to hear from Whitney here in a second, we are operating very inefficiently, and we are doubling and tripping our... Tripling our efforts and try to get things done that don't have to be, okay? And then when Whitney's done, I'll come back and wrap it up. So, Whitney, if you'd like to take it, the document that's on the screen and in your packet, was what I asked Whitney to put together on this topic.
So I told myself I'd give myself a year of working with the finances between the two before making a decision, and meeting with the auditors and talking with them again. So, I went through the process of setting up two sets of different payrolls through Paycom and then ADP. So with that, I went through two sets of who does this, who does that, I had to set up two different payrolls with the city and KMU. I do two sets of payroll, so right now KMU is ready to go, I can submit that. I'm waiting for the city, because there are a couple of things that are wrong. Then, when payroll is processed, I set up, I pay payroll out of the city account, and then I pay payroll out of the KMU account, same thing with all the benefits that go with it. I set up journal entries to pay the para, the HSA, all of these different benefits that we pay to our employees and staff. I have to do two sets of everything. Like, it's very redundant, it gets very, I wouldn't say messy, but it comes to the point where it's just like this is, every month, every two weeks, it's the same process two times all the time, sometimes three, depending on the month. Then we get to the bank statements, there's two bank accounts, we have two bank accounts. So when it comes for paying bills, I have to split things up, check for city, check for KMU, I can't send some checks until the KMU checks are written or a city check is written, I don't want to pay that much money in cash. So I wait. I just took this on, what, September, August, in Holly, I'm still getting used to it, but there's still the redundancy of the two sets of everything, you're waiting for this, or two of this. And we have two sets of different signers for each bank account. So again, you got to wait for somebody to come in and sign them. City bank account is pretty straightforward and easy, KMU can get a little bit more complex, I can work with that, it's fine. So investments, again, two steps, we have two separate investments, 4M and Northland Securities, those are fine, they're separate, they're easy to do, it's just an investment or interest, you're done. Bill payments, again, it's the two sets of everything. You can probably split a good, I think we estimate about eight hours a week maybe, and not have to do that, or eight hours, yeah.
We're talking about two to three days a month, yeah.
Yeah, including payroll processing and stuff. If there is a bill that was paid incorrectly out of the wrong account, which the auditors and I did find, this becomes a three-step process, including cutting another check. There was a bond payment that was issued in Jan... Last January, that the city covered the costs for KMU, and I didn't catch it until the auditors caught it. Now it's a three-step, I have to do a due-to, due-from, KMU has to cut a check, get approval from KMU to do it, they need to sign it, and we go to the bank and cash that check. It gets to be pretty redundant. And then the audit every year is one audit, and they find these and tell me what, how much money needs to move around. With having the audit, the auditors every year have come back and said, you need to combine these bank accounts, it's going to create so much more efficiency, going to make things a lot easier, and with fund accounting, it will protect that money that sits in each fund. We have our general government fund, which is that 101 fund, then we have our KMU funds, which is 601 and 603, and then we have our general fund, our government funds, enterprise funds, for our wastewater and street water and all those other funds. That money stays within those enterprise funds and doesn't go anywhere. And with how the audit is set up, they will make sure that that money stays where it needs to be, and it doesn't go to the general government fund, and the general government money doesn't come into enterprise funds. Very secure, it's very, it's done well. I... We talked to Brad at ABDO, he's the audit partner, and he's done the KMU audit and the city audit, when they were separate and now together since 1998, and they've been pushing for this merger since we became in the same building. I said I'd wait a year and make my decision, and I think it's time because of all these things, and I think it would be a lot easier. Getting it going is going to be a lot of... Getting it going is going to be a lot of. Trouble, because we have a lot of things that come out of the K M U account and the city account. But that will come with time and we'll get that figured out.
And Brad is willing to work with us from A B O, the audit firm, to be able to work with us. We went through a step by step with them on what it would take to put it in place. It may be a little bit more time consuming upfront to put it in place, but after that, it drives a lot of efficiencies and this thing just kinda chugs along then. Without all the extra work that goes into it, but.
And these are just a few of the things that I've noticed that are redundant.
We haven't used the same monitors every year for the last ten years, have we?
Uh, C L A recommend, recommend the same thing, put them in personnel and they recommended the same thing when we had that break. And then I brought A B O back in and they still recommend it.
Anyway. Alright, so just you, you, you heard from all of us. We all had kind of bits and pieces and all that, and and I know we're gonna turn it over to kinda hear what. Some of the folks have to say, but I I just wanna articulate as well as I can. This was never, this whole exercise, me digging into it, all the questions, all the people I talked to, phone calls I made, so on and so forth. Was never ever designed to have K M U go away. This was all designed about, let's all of us. Operate efficiently. Let's, let's, when we looked at the policies and the procedures on it, it was very clear to me, reading through that, that that was what the expectations were. Um, I wanna be able to have a working relationship with all the folks in K M U. I wanted to continue to, you know, build the relationships with all the other entities here in the city. I just would like for all of us to figure out a process where we can bring K M U into the fold with everyone else. And and it would be my responsibility to be able to manage, manage all, all the aspects of the city that I believe I was brought in here to do. So the whole thing about this conversation was not about getting rid of anybody or getting rid of any entity. But was more collaboration, sharing and more dealing with the day to day operations. Who's reporting to who and who, who's got ultimate responsibility at the end of the day to make sure that K M U and every other entity in the city is successful. And that's what I believe I was brought to do, and that's what this was, from my perspective, driving towards. So the ask is, as you read up there, and you can see that the ask of the council. Is what Frank already read, but it's very, it's very well articulated on what. My ask is of the council and what things can look like moving forward. Along with K M U. My recommendation was never to get, to change or to get rid of the commission either. I think that the commission has a role. So I just wanted to be very clear, but I wanna be able to work with the commission. I wanna be able to work with K M U and I wanna be part. Of what they got going on, so I understand it a little bit more. And that was the reason why I sat in and at the last meeting. And then I was asked to leave that meeting. Because they were going into a closed session. And that I don't think was right, and that's what started this whole thing for me taking a look at. That's all I got.
Before Randy starts, I wanna add, got a question for you. What was your, when was your start date?
Uh, December, the week of December sixteen.
And when was the K M U meeting?
I'd have to take a look, but it was the one that Randy and.
Date four, yeah, thirteen. Technically, you weren't the city administrator at that point.
That might be. Does that make a difference?
Little bit, yeah.
Okay, so what date was that meeting? I, I, I really don't remember what the date of the meeting.
Uh, let me check here. I'll take it for seconds. The third, the seventeenth.
The seventeenth of December?
That was the date before you started.
So I officially started on the books. I wasn't in the office, but I started December sixteen.
I think it was the fourteenth, that's the start of payroll.
Well, it's even worse than for you guys. It's the fourteenth, they said. I sa- I had it in my head. It was the sixteenth.
That's a question on how did you get. Get the information about the meeting? If you weren't on the thing, you know.
I wasn't on what? Step, I started getting invites to meetings uh, that were happening, not just K M U, but all meetings. Early on, when I accepted the job and the council approved me to come on, so I started getting.
Oh, but how did you get um, told about this? Did you get official, I mean, the agenda, I'll do it myself and all that, or? Did you get a private call on it, is what I'm saying?
To join the meeting that I was at?
That there was a meeting gonna be.
No, no, I didn't get a private call. It would have been just an invite. That's on just like.
Who'd you get the invite?
I, I'd have to look, maybe Holly or or Whitney or somebody.
When did you start?
Whitney, Whitney just told me that she started my payroll on the fourteenth. In my head, I started Monday the sixteenth.
They showed up in the office with me. Uh, then the seventeenth, he was here for, sorry, me, right? So you were in a venue, then?
Yeah, yeah.
He was hired in his official start date, but just that he wasn't in the office.
Well, we're tripping over.
Still.
I was told his start date would be here. That, that's.
His physical start date in the office, but he was hired up at fourteen. Starting fourteen.
Brandon asked, cuz I noticed right away when you come into the meeting, you were upset. About not getting. You, I know you had to drive, you know, quick to get here and stuff, whatever, but you were upset about something. That's why I was wondering how you got. How it got to you that there was a meeting? Was it lack of me not getting stuff to you or whatever?
No, I don't think I, I don't think I got the invite from you. I think I got it as I did a lot of the different committees and different teams that meet. And I'm still getting more and more all the time.
Is this leading to a point? Why being? What point are we getting to trying to determine what day he starts and?
I was just curious. And to answer your question, Randy, I don't recall coming to that meeting upset. I know I was late. I know when I, cuz I drove straight from the cities down here and I didn't get here as quick as I wanted to in the meeting already kicked off, and then I came in and sat down and. But I don't ever recall being upset. I don't know why I would have been upset to be at a meeting, but.
I was gonna, I don't, I thought you'd been upset, you know, it's.
Alright.
When you walked out.
I don't think I was upset when I walked out, Randy. I think I was just a little. Kind of miffed, if you will, it's like, what just happened here kinda deal? Um, not exactly sure.
Can we stay on topic again? And I think you wanna address something?
Okay.
There's a couple, one thing, I heard the same thing you were talking about.
Okay.
There's the issue. That K M U has quite a bit more money than the city does. In an account.
Okay.
Is the city trying to take that money over or who's gonna control where it go?
That is stuck with the funds. It cannot go anywhere.
When you, when you go with one checkbook, who?
The funds stay, the funds stay within there. So when you're coding or reporting invoices and it's. Six oh one and six oh three, that money stays specifically in there. The money does get mingled together. But expenses and revenues come in with that six oh one and six oh two. It's no difference.
Does the commission still okay the checks?
Yeah, they will still go through that as statute says. There has to be a treasurer and a commissioner that approves it.
Okay, well, I was confused on, when you put them together. Is it gonna be the city council that approves it all or whatever?
So mostly through consent agenda with them, but they can still, they can and should still go to the commission, yeah.
Okay.
With the exceptions of what Mr. Riggs already talked about a little bit, if it came to bonding and all that, then it comes in from.
Yep, I understand.
Yeah, we still want the commission to be involved because they are, it would be like. It's not letting the council be, so it's still part of the commission stuff. But it would just make a lot of things so much more efficient on my end, so I could continue to produce quality products with my stuff. I'm being selfish, that like, it does get redundant doing the things that I do.
Sure.
Do everything.
So, I'm not a good public speaker, as everybody knows. But I wrote down some things that I want to address to the city council. Um. Here's how I wrote it. Which, and I'm, I'm probably gonna goof up on names and stuff, best of your last name, Scott. Is it Langer or Lern?
Lerner.
Lerner?
Lerner, yeah.
Um, good evening, mayor and city council. After looking over the agenda for the city council meeting for January fourteenth, twenty twenty five. I read there is a quest for council action, action requested by, I'm gonna say Scott. Uh, city administrator Scott. Title of issue, corrections of the relationship between the city of Kenyon and Kenyon Municipal Utilities. Cuz my name and title on agreement, I want to let you know from the standpoint. On the issue. First of all, my title is operation superintendent, not line superintendent. The Kenyon Municipal Utilities did my evaluation as asked by me. With a request for me to be done in a closed meeting. As to the issue. Um, city administrator Scott has brought about K M, brought about K M U commission. And the way evaluations are being done and who does them and keeps the evaluation of Kenyon Municipal Utilities employees. Answer to that, they are in a locked file with keys. Kept by operation superintendent, which is me. Which was asked to me about five months ago by finance director. On who has the keys to their, to these files and why does. She not have keys to them? I asked city administrator Scott Riggs, which you already said, Frank. The question, he responded to me, his response to me. Was I should be the one who keeps the files locked up and the holder of the keys. Unless some policy has been changed, that I have not been given a copy of Kenyon Municipal Utilities employees. Except the finance director are under jurisdiction of Kenyon Municipal Utilities. And and by the city of Kenyon organizational charge. Finance director is under Kenyon Municipal Utilities and city administrator. In this agenda, in this, this agenda, it reads there was a simple request that superintendent Randy Egger. Was asked for a copy of the most recent performance evaluations completed by the. Three member Ken, Kenyon Minis- Kenyon Utility Commission. I did not and have not received this request. As the issue between depart- and to the issues between departments. Myself and others I work with are not happy with what interim city administrator Frank Boiles. Has put on the council package. That we were spoke, when, when we spoke to with, to him. He told us. This would be under confidentiality and we kept quiet. And just between him and the person or persons he was talking with. Last thing I put on there, look how it ended up on the agenda to everybody. Thank you for your.
Thank you.
Can I speak? A little bit of speaking, what would you be? First of all, I would probably be remiss in saying that any of you linemen or public works or firemen or cops or. Anybody that works for the city couldn't probably go somewhere else and make a lot more money. Uh, what does a lineman for a large utility make, Randy? Do you have any idea like what, what, what starting wage would be?
One guy that was here for only two months. He got the job here. He left to a big utility for uh, twenty something dollars more in house.
So I would say, and I can tell you from being a former employee, I remember when I first started, Mr. Willie was in charge of K M U. You worked the road, the streets, did all the work, as did Mr. Meyer. That's all I've been here. And I've seen you guys work toe to toe, hand in hand with everyone from. Like the county rural stuff when they needed things to public works, to the city staff, to the police department, all kinds of stuff. So I'm letting you know that we appreciate you greatly. Now, when I was a city employee and I was an administrator. I learned a valuable, valuable lesson of communication. Every morning, I came in here, checked my mail, sat in that office. And told whoever the city administrator was, hey, here's kinda what's going on today. I've got this going on, this happened last night, we're looking to maybe purchase this, what do you think? And that open line of communication got so much done. What I'm seeing here is a lack of communication. Is there a famous movie that talks about that? We've got here's a lack of communication. And we just. And I want this, what it sounds like to me, please correct me if I'm wrong. If this takes place and these changes remain, this does not change anything day to day operations for Mr. Egger or any of his crew, correct? And they still do utility stuff, they still have their buildings, have their equipment and so forth. If we do this kinda stuff, this streamlines some of the process financially. It gives, I would say the city a little more insight into what goes on. Thinking about this, as I do as a former, you know, city administrator, least chief person, I should say it that way. Is I always look at the liability factor. If there's something in a file, and I'm not saying Mr. Egger ever or has ever would get a bad review, I'm not saying that at all. Uh, maybe he has something in there, maybe he doesn't, maybe he has to write something up for one of his coworkers or something. If the city staff doesn't know about that, or at least has some inkling of it and something happens, how does that make us look? And where do we end up with that? Okay, so what I'm looking at here is, what I would like to see is. This streamlined, it makes it more efficient. When I was elected to be on the council, one of the goals was to make things more efficient. And I've talked about this before, when I ran for council, my big thing, and I told everybody in the class. I wanted people that work for the city treated better than I was right about the time that I left. Remember all that, what? Would it call that one when I left? Was it really good? No, it would have been great. So. My goal is to make this so that we all work well together. That's what I want and I don't think I'm asking too much. That's just my opinion and I wanted to share that, so. I don't think a lot would change if this took place, other than a little more transparency and communication. I think it would speed up the process when it comes to the bookkeeping, which thank you for doing that, because that's a really hard task. I think of this, and all the work that she does every day with all this stuff, it's a lot of work that's well done behind the scenes by all of you, when you're all appreciated. You really, really are. But I don't know what's happened to separate the waters a little bit, but I would love to see it get back together again and have us work cohesively. For the betterment of our city as a whole, that is it.
Thank you, Lee. And then, and I'm just gonna add that, you know, for a couple of years here, before you were here, Scott. That probably doesn't have anything to do with you. Things got separated and people were kinda running their own show. And people probably got used to that and, you know, so. More communication. Cause there's just been, there's been a lot.
My boundaries, but there is my piece, so.
Yeah.
Is there any further discussion? Otherwise, do we have a motion?
Uh, that's my question, man. Is there gonna be a motion on it or is it gonna be able to help? They find out, or is, what is the motion, can we develop?
Um, well, right now it's this motion on the K M's discussion, and I believe it's all in that one paragraph that was up there.
Yeah.
Basically organizing, making things clear, getting everybody on the same page, it's.
Randy, look at that and see if there's something that you don't agree with or disagree on.
Thing is that, are you gonna act on something right away without checking in that, you know, if, if this motion goes in? Is everything gonna change right now? Or is it gonna be looked into, how it can be changed?
Yeah, I, I, I think the discussion's been, there, there was going to be a review of it, look at these agreements, decide, Randy, what needs for, and frankly, what. You and Scott need to make everything work out, in all honesty, so. Do I think it, do I think it changes and suddenly you're locked out? No, that's not what the intent is. It's exactly what Lee said. I, I mean, get them to work together. Yeah. Understand. Yeah. Yeah, got it.
But if it, if, my question was the same thing, if you guys are bored on it right now, that you're gonna change everything about doing a study manager.
They're, they're, they're basically, the motion is, is directing the city administrator to, to work on this organizational wide, including specifically. You know, K M U operations and considering what you're doing, obviously. So yeah, that's the direction. Again, I don't think there's anything that immediately changes, but as soon as Whitney can. Get the book straighter, that, that simplifies, that's part of the city's operations and makes it easier. So yeah, there'll be steps that come into being, but that's for staff to figure out how to put that in play. That's what the council would be directing. And you're part of the staff, e- even though you're K M U, you were, you're still part of, you're a city employee at this point.
Uh, great. Uh, you remember a meeting between myself and the. I know you had a brief paragraph out of that whole paper about our meeting, which was supposed to be confidential. Do you recall anything else that we talked about other than us pretending? Because of the problems that are going on in the city.
Do you recall anything else that we talked about other than us pretending because of the problems that are going on in the city?
That was the thing that struck me as most urgent, most concerning. And if I said everything was going to remain confidential, shame on me. You don't make any progress if you keep your mouth shut. On all aspects, we've been doing that for how many years and this is where it's gotten. So I do apologize and Randy, I apologize for misstating your job title. My bad.
And I know you had pulled us and correct me if I'm wrong. Did you end up having a conversation with two departments that like you said you were going to have or?
Yes.
Follow through on that?
Yes. Oh, you were on vacation. I I'm corrected. No, we didn't.
There, he didn't have the, it's taught because Doug has left and here was on vacation.
Well, this would be a good way to start it up, wouldn't it?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Mayor. I gotta do one more thing. I just wanna add what Mr. Riggs was talking about here. Randy, just to be clear, what we have up there is what I'm asking the council to be part of. So everything that Mr. Riggs talked about. With the addition of engaging the personnel committee, which is the mayor and Kim, council member Helgeson. To be able to start talking about uh, what could, you know, what should, what would the org chart look like? What do some of these agreements, maybe we need to dust these agreements off because they have old dates and stuff on it. Start thinking about what do things look like moving forward as Mr. Riggs was talking about. Also, but it's not in there, but also my expectations would be once we get together as a personnel committee and we start moving. That we would engage the commission at that point. I wanna have a dialogue with the commission and have. Input and open communications and all that kind of stuff. And you and I can start tonight or tomorrow morning having conversations on this. But what what the ask is, is not that you wake up tomorrow, your world is different now. That's not the deal. That's what the ask is up there so we can continue to move forward, which Mr. Riggs eloquently spoke to. But I wanted to make sure that you were clear that we're also looking to put the personnel committee, engage the personnel committee and start moving forward.
The analogy this brought up, Scott.
Yeah.
Been on that because Molly was Molly Ryan.
Yes.
Used to be on the personnel committee and she was the representative for KMU.
Yeah.
And, you know, is there any way that one of the commissioners could be on the personnel committee? Involved in like a KMU? Well, it used to do, man, it was going to have to do with.
Are you talking about Molly on the on the KMU commission board?
Yeah, she was also.
Personnel, was she?
She was on the council and she was on the personnel committee.
Before you. Okay, that's where we're going back a little bit.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, okay.
That's something Scott's gotta look at because, yeah, with with having a different commissioner there, you will have to figure that out, but. That was the intent before with the council that that council member could oversee and had a broad view of what was there. Exactly. Yeah, so that is something the council's gonna think about and Scott needs to deal with.
Yeah, that might be a good idea, you know, since we're moving into this new territory and there's high tensions that might. You know, make it better, make for better communication.
So you are aware that you approved.
That's true.
A new person to that commission earlier tonight, right?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
You you did, and and if there's an issue with that, you can work with the commission on that. Exactly. Yeah, yeah. So I, I mean, it's something to think about. Randy brings up a good point. That was by design before. The council had tried to do that to make sure there was the overlapping in review going on, but. It it doesn't have to be, but that's a good point from Randy. It really is. That's what was there before. That means having another person from that commission working with the the committee as well. That's an easy way to do it as well.
Why didn't you not find out about this being brought up till last minute?
In regards to my request to the council to try to. Bring things into alignment.
It's the same for us.
As I say, I don't.
We just kinda get this as the agenda, like, you know, it's like, it's nothing like I, we just learned about this as well, you know, not, you know, like, when I got the agenda, then I. Write about this, but we weren't all talking, you know, we can't do that. So I just wanna let you know, we can't talk about that. So like when this came to me, I'm like, oh. There's a big thing going on, you know, that I just, you know, that's part of, so then we can discuss it because we don't just, as a council anyway. You know, he can, they can discuss with the attorney and all this, but we don't discuss this prior. You know, like I had no idea until I opened my packet today. I'm like, okay, you know, and then this is going on, just so you know. Like, we're not, we're not up, you know, up here like evil and doing this or whatever.
I was told we can't have closed meetings.
No, that's illegal. It's illegal. We could get in trouble. So like, if we went and met like at my house and we're talking about this, like, that'd be very illegal. So. Just so you know, we're not, I know that if you don't know that, it seems, yeah, we all just learned about this too, so.
That answer your question, Jen?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So. You gotta figure out, you know, how we're gonna. Are we splitting this somehow or how we, what are we doing here? You know, so that we're all on the same page here.
May I take that? Uh, i- i- you, it's a good question. I'm sorry, I I didn't mean to cut you off and. Um, yeah. KMU has certain things that it is separate for certain purposes, but it still depends on the city. It only exists because of the city. Same thing with the EDA. The reality is the EDA has more power than KMU does on paper. Now, that's not how the city operates and it never has and it shouldn't, not in a city of this size. Um, the reality is that was the point of what the council and KMU tried to do back, you know, twenty three plus years ago, whatever it was, to make sure things are working together. So. Yes, I have other communities that have utilities. Some have electric generation as well, just like this, and. In that case, they have electric and water, just like KMU has. In all these cities, and this happened before and Randy can attest to this, years ago, there was discussion by the council to give. Streets, wastewater, everything else to the utility. That's not what the council wanted to do. So we don't wanna do that. We don't need to do that because we'll work together. KMU does that. They're they're better at the electrical. That's who the staff was was dealing with it, but. The whole idea of everything and everything that's before you and that motion that's up there is just to try to get it back to where everything's working smoothly. That's the bottom line, the whole idea. That's what the council and KMU tried to do twenty three plus years ago. And and it sounds like it's getting there already with the conversations. That's that's the little point. There were a number of work sessions between the groups. That's what I think will happen. You may have to meet, you know, with your board that you've already appointed. But it's along with staff, working with staff as well.
And so this is, you know, just to be clear for everybody, so this is just kind of the beginning.
Correct.
And there will be other things that are coming through that we might have to approve and discuss with these guys and so not everything is like set in stone right away. It's like, okay, this is the beginning to get the ball rolling so she can get. The books together.
No, they want to came up with a quick conversation. We it was, we've got these agreements, but it's Scott said, and I've already said it. Yeah, they need to be updated.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you guys good with that to just get the ball rolling so we can? You guys comfortable with that?
And I certainly will meet with the commission on, but just for simplicity sake. If you take a look at our org chart, because sometimes I'm a visual person, so I like looking at that. If you take a look at the org chart, what my request to the council is, you have the city council who I report to. At the pleasure of the council, they give me direction on what needs to be done in the city. I'm. Tasked with implementing that. So if you take a look at an org chart, it would be the city council. I report to the city council and everything else in the city reports up to the city administrator. That that's gonna be, that's if if you wanna take a picture or a snapshot in your mind, that's kind of the request. How we get there in the day to day operations with KMU, that's gonna be Randy and I and the commission and personnel committee. It's gonna be all of us. It's gonna be by committee. But tonight is, they ask us for the council to approve this so we can start moving forward and getting closer to the end game of where we wanna get to.
But you just wanna be your boss? Is it that?
Um. That's a different way of putting it. Um, for the simple fact that it doesn't feed my ego, if that's what you're thinking. I I don't have to be the boss. But at the end of the day, the buck's gotta stop with somebody and the council has tasked me that the buck stops with me, and that doesn't just mean KMU. That means everything that goes on in the city. So if they want me to manage the city the way I've been asked to do that, that means I have to have the ability and the authority to be able to manage that. I don't necessarily agree that I have to be the boss. It's not what I came here to do. I came here to do a job that I was asked to do, and if that means that KMU has to come in. Line with the rest of the entities, yeah, I guess so. I guess the answer is yes. But that wasn't my intention to come in here and say, oh. Damn it, I gotta be the boss. No, that's that wasn't my intentions.
What's that?
Well, he's got like a whole chart. What you said, you know, from two thousand and.
One? That's the one I referred to. I have a copy of it right here. Just like everything else we talked about from two thousand and two thousand and one, those documents need to be updated. So does that.
Now, this one is really.
And it's really old and it is confusing. I would agree with you a hundred. I looked at that. I'm like, what in the world is going on?
That was, that was at the same time the. That's we're done, so.
I know.
Same time as the agreements you're referring to, John? Absolutely. You're a hundred percent right. Yep, yep.
As long as.
That's one of my top priorities is to get that updated.
I'm just gonna comment that. Commissioner has sworn up by it.
Yeah, you can make.
No, I I understand that whole, yeah.
It says city council, not the city.
Yes, that's exactly what that document says. I would agree with you.
The only one of uh, the finance director, which is a KMU employee, she is under the the commission and the city council or city. Or the city.
And there's things on that org chart that you look at, Randy, that are in the city that aren't even on the org chart. That that org chart. Needs work. I will agree with you. Yeah.
I'm floating in my own world, Jim.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we have another comments that you have?
Is the next step to get rid of the commissioner? No, we want the commission.
Everything's the same pretty much. It's just better communication, better flow of money.
Within the city with other departments and this way, if I, as a council member, come to our administrator and go, can you tell me this? I don't wanna blindside it by going, I haven't seen anything and I don't know. It's all about communication. I said that when I started my little on my soapbox speech, all about communication. I want you guys to be treated well. I want you all to work well together to the best of your ability. Like I told my old coworkers, you don't have to hold hands. You don't gotta go to dinners together. You don't gotta go for moonlight walks during eight hours a day that you're here. I'd like you to work well together to the best of your ability.
With both hands, the same boom back?
You don't like, you want to, fine, but you don't have, I want you to work well together. What I'm asking.
If there's no real further discussion on.
And I know it's got too much risk and down. Do I leave the person of the? The the file cameras, the way it is, and that was changed or what do I do?
I'll I'll talk with you and Scott about that. We'll, let's move on. Let's get offline. We'll, we'll, we'll do the details. Yeah.
So if there's no further discussion on the box or request of cancellation, I'd like to make a motion on. Start the process of meeting there. For a second.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Those awesome passes.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Count Mayor and Council for the discussion and thanks all of you on the crowd too for your discussion. I appreciate hearing your input and. And hearing us off too. So I appreciate everybody's input and as I know this is a long topic, but.
All right, let's move on to the next. Resolution two twenty five zero two, the resolution authorizing acceptance of two twenty, two thousand twenty five donations. Do we have any discussion there or we just need a motion? Yeah, my, yeah, I don't have that on.
No, she she is a resolution twenty twenty four oh two. It's a donation resolution. Isn't it?
Different.
Oh, it's different there. Okay, I'm on the other agenda. Okay. Either one. There's two things. Yeah.
So all of you, if you don't have it, it's out, it's on the screen. You can take a look at the screen to get up to speed if you need to.
And here's this. A egg lease for two, two hundred more acres city owned land.
Okay, we can do that one.
Good anyways.
One of all this.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, can you low set us where we're at? We were just looking at donations and I'm hearing you're going somewhere else.
Yeah, one or package.
There was a couple of updates that Polly had done. What do you wanna do with this?
We can do the egg lease of two point two five acres city owned land. And are we able? To combine that with that ten point five acre city owned land also?
If you want to. For two different leases and two different people, but they aren't just standard leases is what they are, so.
Different motions?
Okay, you can. That's fine. I get it. I understand. Yeah, do them separately. That's fine. Yep.
All right, egg lease land on two point two five acres city owned land.
I will make a motion to approve that. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Most of the passes. On the egg lease for ten point five acres city owned land.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Most of the passes. And. Oh, we did Jacobson. Now we're on. The ad signatory at Security State Bank opinion.
Make motion to add that to the signatory Security State Bank. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Most of the passes.
Uh, KMU hasn't done anything to change any bank accounts yet. We don't have to do anything yet. But it's still you and. Um, it's just you and Jimmy.
All right, and I will see council training. Frank, did you wanna speak a little about that, please?
That's my word. Um, congratulations to all of you who have been reelected, non-elected, uh, or newly elected. Uh, it's a wonderful thing you're doing for your community. It really is. Um, you may have already gotten a sense, at least for those of you who are brand new, that this is just a little bit larger than you thought it might be in terms of things. Things you're discussing and trying to work with, and it really is. Um. I've always been amazed at how council members can uh, really cover three hundred and sixty degrees of all the material they need. To know and understand to make intelligent decisions for the current and future community. And Elite Minnesota Cities, who is an advocate for each of the cities uh, in the state of Minnesota. Provides some assistance in this regard. They have a, basically, it's a one and a half day conference. Uh, and they offered in three different places. The closest one to us is uh, uh. Mankato, pardon me. Uh, and the Mankato Conference would be February seven and eight, so that's a Friday, Saturday, should be if I've got the right numbers. Here's what it's comprised of. First, uh, it about three weeks before the in-person event, you'll get online materials. A total of six hours of preparatory information, laying the terms, uh, understand the basic reason for uh, government. Um, or at least uh, local government, et cetera. Those things you're supposed to finish before the first day of the class. You you show up the first day of the class at ten AM on eleven o'clock, they start. Uh, and uh, they'll provide you with a great background on the things you need to know. Uh, you know, municipality one oh one, city council member one oh one, mayor one oh one. Um. I believe that the best benefit, and I appreciate this, this takes the biggest bite out of your life, is that all five of you go together together with Scott. So why do I say that? Because you guys are going to be going to be meeting at least twelve times a year, right? It's a lot more than that when it comes right down to it, but then add all your committees. You're going to need some basic background uh, in some municipal law and other issues that come up. Places where you've got a high degree of liability, places where you don't. All five of you. All five of you there, some of the greatest benefit is just spending time together. Letting your hair hang down, talking maybe about what you've learned, um, what is inconsistent with, uh, what you've learned, et cetera. And just getting to know each other as people, because the relationship between you guys, despite the fact that it's very constrained by state law. Is one of the most important relationships you can have to have an effectively operating city. Actually, it's one more person. It's him. With all five of you. And normally, you can't meet together. In this particular case, uh, it is possible. Um, through my friends at Lake of Minnesota Cities. Am I lucky? No, no.
It is. It is. You can't specifically make decisions about the city, but your educational aspects you can discuss with Scott and work through that and things like that. But no. Somebody called you and said, can we sign this check? And you all say, yes, let's vote for it. You can't do it. Not that Whitney would do that, but I'm just saying, you, you can't do something. So, no, it, it, it's got limits.
Checks made out to her. Come on.
You said your call.
So. I'm sorry, man.
You said that there's a three-week signup thing prior that we'll receive information.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm doing a very good job on that.
Right now.
Huh?
We're at that deadline.
We're, we're getting ver- very, very close. So we need, I've checked, there are six spots open. The cost to the city is three fifty each. Uh, and where's my notes? And it's one thirty-nine for one overnight room. Most of the meals are covered except the noon meal as you're leaving. That guy there has a plastic card. Stick with him. So, so at least you're gonna leave with a full stomach. Now, you first, the first thing you're gonna say, and I understand it, I've heard it a thousand times, that's too big. An obligation for me. I got something scheduled with the kids with, I, I, I understand, life goes on. Want to say goodbye to those guys? Um. But it, you're, you're gonna find out that if you don't go, you'll, uh, because the excuse I hear most often is, well, let's save the taxpayer money. You don't. Honest to God. There's too much to learn. They know how to structure this material. They've been doing it for years. And I, the feedback I've gotten from my council members before is this one is the one to go to. There's another one. They said, nah, maybe not. That's, that's for experienced. Officials. Maybe that's just because their ego has grown. I don't know what the reason is, but this would be less than four thousand dollars to the city unless you charge for mileage, which you can do under city's policy. Um, and I would certainly strongly urge you to register for this and participate in it. That's, uh, any questions?
Um, besides this, ever, like, when I started, I was, I started in twenty twenty.
Okay.
So I, like, had to do it all. Online, like, what do they do now? I'm just curious.
So they.
I'm just asking out of curiosity.
So, okay, they have the online portion.
Yeah.
And it, it's about six hours worth.
Right.
But you, you know, uh.
Went through a big, did you have a big deal? Yeah, it's like a couple days or whatever, right? Like, that's mandatory. You have to do that.
Yeah, because it's preparatory for the stuff you're going to deal with in class. So on the seventh and, uh, eighth, I think that's what I said, February, Friday. And Saturday, then you go through the in-person, starting at eleven o'clock on Friday. They're done by noon Saturday, Saturday, so at least you haven't blown the heck out of your entire. Weekend. You may want to carpool together. You certainly can do that. Uh, the city will, uh, provide the, uh. IRS, um, reimbursement, and I really strongly recommend, you'll. You'll be better council members before it, and please don't take any, uh, anything negative out of that. I know you're great council members. You're gonna be much, much better. This is going to give you a leg up. Well, if some of you go and some of you don't, what you're gonna have is an education lag. The ones who didn't go aren't gonna know as much. They're not gonna know the nomenclature, some of the basic premises on, on. How councils act. And. You'll actually slow them down as you're trying to learn. They've already learned this stuff. They went to this session. So, sorry, enough of the sales page. Yeah. Okay. I don't know.
Just, just the conference portion?
And I can't.
No, I don't think they.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, could that be optional?
Okay.
So the one thing I'll add, the whole idea of bringing it up tonight is because. Maybe you guys are benching for this, but anytime. We are asking for money or to spend money looking to get council. Getting coming in, donations, getting. So we're looking to spend some money, so it's twofold. We want approval, uh, to spend the money, uh, if you so see fit. And second, I want to get a headcount of how many, because I can have staff put together reservations and all that kind of stuff and try to make it easy for all of you that want to attend and so on and so. So that's what the ask is tonight is. Approval to spend the fund if you see fit, and if you want to go, give it. I'll make a motion that we.
Well, I'm thinking it'd be beneficial to all. I just don't want to spend the city's money though.
Okay, really.
Guys, for that massive amount of money we paid you.
Thank you.
I make the motion that we spend the funds and want to start our training.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion to the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Right, motion passed thus far. I will see council training. All right, moving on to other businesses.
So.
Oh.
Down the screen.
Okay. All right. Oh, Austin. Okay, back to the resolution twenty twenty-five oh-two, a resolution authorizing acceptance of two thousand twenty-five donation.
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution twenty twenty-five dash two, accepting the, um, twenty twenty-five donations. Oh, twenty twenty-four donations.
Amount, second it.
All right, we have a motion to the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now we'll get on to other business. Okay, we have to schedule upcoming meetings. You don't need a motion like we know. Oh. Yep, schedule upcoming meeting, the KMU meeting Tuesday, January twenty-first at four PM. E, eh, the EDA annual meeting Tuesday, January twenty-first. Twenty-first at eight AM at Caja Bistro. And the city council meeting Tuesday, February eleventh at seven PM. Right, council staff, general comments. Um, I'd like to start off by, please be patient with me. I'm really.
You're doing good. You're doing great, man.
I appreciate the support and. And all the city employees, what you do for us, that's. It's awesome. Just, please be patient with me. What do you have?
Um, I'll just, we'll just go. I'll go down the line.
Sure.
Um, just welcome to all the new faces. It's exciting to have new faces and to work with new people, and. I'm looking forward to it, and they, thank you, everybody in KMU for the. Good discussion, even though it's difficult because we need those sometimes, and, um, I hope everything works out well for us in the future.
I'm saying welcome to the new people as well, and looking forward to, looking to know you. Um. One question on the EDA meeting, do we need to keep you a headcount if. If we're going to attend the meeting?
Yeah. Yeah, you just be non-hetaxic, and I think that's.
So, no.
Okay. You know, just they have a general idea.
Yeah.
That's obviously, just thank you to all the staff and, yeah, with KMU for. For just getting this worked out and getting everything aligned and easier, more efficient.
Congratulations to the new members. Congratulations, Scott. Well, and I encourage all my peers who all know that I appreciate you greatly as those everyone in the city, so thank you all for all the work that you're doing. We really appreciate it.
I have a lot to learn.
Any of you guys, maybe.
Oh, I'm sorry, you guys.
Maybe these guys want to say something.
Guys want to say something? Oh, yeah.
Can I say something really quick?
Yeah.
It is Frankie's last day.
Oh, that's well, that's well.
A lot of people are excited.
That this is his last day?
Yes. And I'm willing to kick him and shove him out the door, but anyway. Um.
I didn't, I didn't put her up to it. Yeah, I'm only a few months behind, so.
He's done a. Good work, a lot of work. Work. He's done, he's done good. Um, there's been things that I think we've butted heads on and done a lot of, um. Butted heads on. We get along, we laugh, we have a good time. Um. Along with that, he's worked with us in the office here for, since May, and him and Holly have worked a lot together. Always worked a lot on issues as well, and I think we've done a lot in the last six months. Is that how long it's been? We've got a lot accomplished in the last six months. I'm excited to see where it goes next. We've learned a lot from them.
Mm-hmm. Yes, thanks, Frank.
Appreciate your time. I make, I'm, I'm happy that you were here, and I'm really excited to see you.
Well, at that note, I just want to thank Frank also for the simple fact that when I came in. There was a lot going on. And. My understanding and. What I witnessed when I came in, Frank kind of came in here at the time. And, and I think Frank was able to do some of that. Um, the handoff to me has been very smooth. Um, Frank and I have been working the last couple of weeks on when we seem to think that there'd be a good handoff and. And he can ride off into the sunset, and we chose today, uh, for a couple of things, um, wrap up a couple of things, but I wanted him to have the opportunity to get in front of all of you and for all of us to kind of wish him well. Uh, I think he definitely was able to, to help. He was definitely able to. Pass the reins off to me and kind of find a happy medium, and I wish you all the best, Frank, and I, and I, I love you like a brother, and I wish you the best in wherever you go and whatever you do going forward. And I want to thank you, at least from me personally, and I think I'm speaking for some of the folks here in, in the city, uh, we thank you for your time and effort that you put in here to help out, and, uh, thank you for. Welcoming me and bringing me into the fold of a bunch of different things.
Thank you, Scott. You're a lovely one.
Yep. And did you guys still want me to check out some of the other?
So if you can't laugh, you're not having a good time. You've got to be able to laugh.
I don't know, my grandpa's got eighty. Who are three years old. All right, then, do we need? Do we need a motion for?
Yes.
All right, do we have a motion for?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm meeting adjourned.
What? Well, because I just, if you get in there.
Moving it along. I know, I'm moving it along. We had that big discussion. I was like, let's get this going.
That was new. I was just sure.
Not a public.
I made one.
Great, buddy.
Yeah.
That's a. It looks like I was like. I felt like. Okay, my face got hot.
Yeah, well, I didn't even realize that was. I mean, I. I didn't.
Oh.
I mean, I, I was like reading all of it today, and I kind of like.